Welcome to our Board of Supervisors meeting for November 13th, 2024. We're going to start this one with a public hearing, and I'm going to hand it right to the bill for that.
Thank you, Mark. This part of the proceedings are a public hearing, and this takes place separately and before the public meeting. Under the zoning law, particularly the law called the Municipality's Planning Code, any time the township or any township wishes to amend its zoning ordinance, the ordinance has to be reviewed, sent to the County Planning Commission, it has to be advertised, and there has to be a public hearing. So tonight, the public hearing is scheduled, it's been advertised, and we will ask for public comment, if any, before the board votes on it, and the vote will take place at the public meeting. So the first item to take care of is the Exhibit T1, which is the affidavit of publication confirming advertisement in the Mercury, the Mercury Digital on October 29th, 2024, and November 6th, 2024. That satisfies the requirement for advertising. And the basis for the zoning change is that it came to the board's attention that there were two different measurement protocols for the distance between gasoline pumps and residences or residential districts. And the inconsistency meant that there'd be different evaluations of plans depending on whether the property was in, was a convenience store with gas or a gas station. So it's kind of a technical matter, but the idea of this change was to bring the two separate measurements basically together. So it is proposed that Section 371-69D of the ordinance regarding location, the current section regarding location of gasoline pumps at convenience stores is deleted. The new section, it's a paragraph, I'll read it, says as follows, "Gasoline pumps shall not be located within 200 feet of a school, place of worship, public recreation area, or residential zoning district. Regarding existing residential dwellings presently located in non-residential districts, no gasoline pumps shall be located within 200 feet of the property line where the residential dwelling is located." So it's a technicality. It came up in connection with a development which apparently is not going forward, but we wanted to clarify it so that there be no misunderstanding as to what the proper designation would be of the distance between a gas pump and a residential district. So at this time, the record is open. If anyone wishes to make a comment about the proposed zoning ordinance, you're invited to step up, give your name and address, and tell the board what you think about this proposal. Well, I guess happily, we see no, not happily, we love to hear from you, but we see no public comment concerning this application. Any comment from the board? All right, seeing none, the record is accordingly closed, and there will be a vote on this particular ordinance change during the course of the meeting. Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Court Reporter.
Oh, you didn't want to hang out with us until midnight?
No, not at all.
Neither do I.
I think we could proceed while she passes off.
Yes, we will call the meeting to order then and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America, considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have with us John Callahan, Danielle Jwan, Martha Majewski, Bob Cooney, and myself, Mark Donovan, your support, and we have Lori Gutz, our manager, Bill Brennan, our solicitor, Paul Battenger, our engineer, and Valentina Mitter, our assistant manager, taking dutiful minutes. Tonight, we have an executive session for personnel matters and property acquisition and potential litigation. And I think that covers us for that. For our consent agenda, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' October 9th, 2024, and October 24, 2024 business meeting. All departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of October 31st, 2024. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Good question you mentioned tonight.
Go ahead, Wada.
You mentioned tonight's exec session. Were there any others that weren't mentioned in there?
I don't believe so. We mentioned the last one at our other meeting, so it would have been recorded at that time. Yeah. Our work, our regular workshop was a business meeting, so we actually announced it at our last business meeting, which was our workshop date. Yep. Let's see, where was I? Okay. Seeing no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion, we consider the Treasurer's report for period ending October 31st, 2024. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Lori?
Yes. For the period ending October 31st, 2024, we have a general fund balance of six, just over $6 million, up a couple, sorry, down a couple hundred thousand over last month. Makes sense, we're nearing the end of the year, our revenues have slowed at this point. We have realized just about 100% of our revenues at this point. We are carrying a healthy surplus at this point in the year, but that will decrease, and we'll get into this as we get into the budget, which is later on on the agenda, but that will continue to decrease steadily as we pay a lot of large expenses at the end of the year. But that's it for me.
Great. Anybody with questions? Motion's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we approve disbursements dated November 13th, 2024. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Bob. I'll let you have credit for that one.
All right, Lori.
All of the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Right on to subdivision and land development. We have the zoning hearing board application for 140 Diamond Rock Road. This applicant seeking a variance from three provisions of Section 371-72 with respect to front yard widths and side yard setbacks. They previously received zoning hearing board relief that has expired, the subdivision plan has no changes, but relief needs to be requested again to proceed with the subdivision. Do we have anybody for this one? Take no. Okay. I'll pass this on for Paul to go ahead.
Yes. So in March of 2021, the applicant received the three variants, the relief for the three zoning variances that they had requested. According to their letter dated October 10th, 2024, from the applicant's engineer, they are requesting the identical zoning variance requests again. There's been no changes to the plans. I have been in communication with their engineer, they are planning to resubmit, et cetera. The project just went on hold. For lack of anything else, it's an existing lot that they're subdividing into three total lots.
Did we take any position at the time when they received zoning hearing board packages?
I don't think so. I don't think the board, there was a discussion about it, I recall, but I don't think, certainly I wasn't there to oppose it, so I guess, I guess the decision was to let the zoning hearing board decide what should be done there. There's a specific provision in the ordinance that says that relief, once granted, expires after two years. So that's what we're doing.
Are there any concerns with the relief that was granted and expired?
No. Most of it had to do with front setbacks and building line setbacks. The one that talks about the side yard setbacks, the existing dwelling itself, is close to the property line. It's about 41 feet where it should have been, should have been at least 50 feet, and the aggregate itself is a little less. But the aggregate is less on the side of the two being, the two new lots being proposed. So it's really almost an existing condition for the existing home.
Will the surrounding neighbors be given notice of this second hearing, or do they only get notice for the first one?
They will get notice, again, it's a new application.
Yeah, it's, it's brand new. It's considered, they're going through the whole process again.
I would say that I don't necessarily have strong feelings, I'd let them take a shot with the zoning board. Anybody else? Great. Sounds like we will take no position on that. And we also have the 40 Creek Road waiver of stormwater management request. This applicant seeking the following stormwater management waivers, the planning commission reviewed and recommends approval of all waivers, including Section 310-25(c)(13) to permit the proposed rain garden to be located less than 30 foot from any structure, property bounty rights away, and banks or streams.
Anyone here for this applicant?
So again, this is similar to some of the other projects that we've had in the township where they're, the applicant goes and seeks the zoning relief, but within the stormwater management, there's a similar criteria in which the stormwater management has to be a certain distance away. And if you recall, 40 Creek Road itself is a very small, uniquely shaped lot. So in the, in the original zoning application, the board did not take a position, and this one waiver request for the location of stormwater management pretty much falls in line with that same scenario. There's really no place to put it.
This one was a little bit controversial in the zoning package because we didn't have your opinion on whether to oppose it or not before the hearing went forward. So we had a hearing made a record, subject to your view of it. And there is a prevailing law on small lots that are not, that were not caused by the property owner, that they, they're generally speaking, unless there are unusual circumstances, entitled to some relief. So you did vote on not going and not opposing it even after the hearing had taken place. So it's a little unusual, but that was, I think, the appropriate position to take.
Anything further from you guys? Yeah. I would make a motion that we grant the waiver that's been requested. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Well, any discussion?
Oh, I was talking about anybody, anybody else having further discussion, or would you like to speak on your own behalf or anything?
So if you want us to wave her.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Quip your head.
Don't ruin it now.
Right. Yeah, I think so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you for making that one easy.
Sorry for the mal.
Yeah, the next one, I'm just gonna pass right to Paul. It's about Aqua Pennsylvania Pickering Plant. They have, they're requesting a waiver, a few waivers of stormwater management. I'm gonna let Paul explain all of them.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mark. So just for reference, this is the project that had requested a waiver of land development, which the Board of Supervisors agreed to. And in this past October planning commission, we were, the applicant had requested four waivers, and I was able to discuss it with the planning commission, and they gave a recommendation for approval to the Board of Supervisors. Now, the four waivers that are, that are being requested, the first is basically talking about a waiver that the, to do the infiltration testing, they basically dug down, they hit dense gravel, and they couldn't get any kind of quality testing. So they're requesting that the infiltration not, not be required for this project. Again, I don't take any, any issue with that because it's very small amount of impervious, and it's a very small percentage of the lot. It's about, total about one acre, less than one acre of disturbance on a 56-acre parcel, and they are trying to keep it as condensed as possible for their project. The second waiver that they're requesting is that it has to do with the peak release rates for the stormwater management. For the higher ranked storms, the 25, the 50, and the 100, they meet the criteria for lowering in the post-development. Now, for the one, the two, the five, and the 10-year, they are unable to attain the reductions, but again, to, due to the limited amount of area they were, they have to work, and that the fact that all of the post-development rates are still less than the pre-development rates for those smaller storms, I don't take objection to that waiver request either. They are, they are putting in a stormwater management system, they just can't hit the criteria for some of the storms, like similar, taking a 10-year pre-developed down to a, or excuse me, a 10-year post-developed down to a two-year pre-developed. It was just, it's a difficult task for the project. The third had to do with the, the way they count impervious area, and they have to make it woodlands and pre-developed. Again, the stormwater management is so minute in this project itself, I didn't have an objection to them not taking into that certain percentage calculation. It wouldn't make that much of a difference either way, certainly wouldn't impact the post-development rates. And the final one, again, is because they're trying to keep this concise with their whole project, their basin's gonna be located within 50 feet of the building. Again, it's going to be, the facility itself is going to be wrapped, the stone, et cetera. It's big 36-inch pipes, it's a 30 by 33 bed. So by no means are they trying to skirt stormwater management in any means. It's just, they're trying to keep it very concise with the rest of their project and the limited disturbance. So those are the four waivers that the applicant is requesting. I don't have an objection to any of them, and I'm happy to have any further conversations if the board has questions.
And you did say this was before the, these waiver requests were before the planning commission?
Yes, they were in this past October. The applicant themselves couldn't be there, so I presented what was going on there, and the planning commissions agreed to recommend to the supervisors.
Okay. Did they have any concerns during their discussions? I did not attend the meeting.
I was there, they did not have any concerns.
No.
Okay.
I think they had a couple of questions, basically, but I'll answer them, or Paul covered those during his talk there.
It was a unanimous recommendation, there was no dissenting vote.
Okay.
Great. I guess, is there any, are there any other questions for Paul? Or suppose any, is there an Aqua representative here, anything you want to say while you're here?
I'm gonna follow suit with this guy.
All right. Well, then, any public comment, anything else? Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we grant the waivers requested from, you'll see them on the agenda. Thank you, Bob. Any further, all in favor?
Aye.
Just note that I'm abstaining, as I am an attorney for essential utilities and affiliate of Aqua Pennsylvania.
Sounds great. Okay, right on to the, one of the big items, budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
I'll hand it right over to Lori.
All right. So we had our budget, our budget workshop at the end of October. So this evening, the board has, we'll just discuss some of the outstanding items from the preliminary budget that we left, that we left on the table at the last discussion. So we're just kinda gonna give a brief overview of just what has changed from the here, from the last budget discussion, or the budget workshop, to tonight, and then we can hit the outstanding items for discussion. And then, if the board is comfortable, on the agenda tonight is for you to vote to authorize advertisement of the preliminary budget for adoption at the December 11th board meeting. So you all have the updated budget in your workspace, so major changes from, from the workshop to now is that the carryover has been cut almost nearly in half from, from the budget workshop. So we are down to a projected carryover of about $469,000. So that would mean if we spend 100% of our expenses, and we would basically need to use general funds to make up the difference. We budget extremely conservative here, so currently, we are, we adopted the 2024 budget with a carryover of just over $202,000. We are currently running about a $1.4 million surplus. Now, again, as I mentioned in my Treasurer's report, that's gonna cut at least in half by the end of the year. We are going to end the year, as I project, with the surplus. And then we'll make, as the board decides, we'll make deposits into various capital funds, as we usually plan to do. But we do, we budget very conservatively for that reason, to cover us in the event that things go terribly, we get a hurricane, we have, you know, some unexpected disaster that comes up, that, that we know we can continue, continue to operate. So that's, that's the mentality there, that's the theory behind it. So we are down to about $473,000 of a carryover. Big-ticket items that, that have adjusted were, really, it's the, it's the fire department that we're, we're gonna get to, it's their capital request, so we'll cover that. Before we jump into that, because I expect that to be a lengthy discussion, the other item that we left last, I was still doing some research on our American Rescue Plan Act funds at the last budget meeting. We received about $900,000 in ARPA funds, and that was money from federal, federal money from, for the COVID recovery. We are required by the federal government to, we had been under the impression that we could just obligate the funds by the end of the year and spend them by 2026. That is still technically true, but what we're hearing, we're hearing some chatter that the, that it's gonna be a lot tougher, that really obligated means you need to have a signed contract, or a purchase order, in order to not be at risk of having to pay that money back. And while we have an agreement with the architect, we don't exactly have, we don't have a purchase order. So I wasn't really comfortable rolling the dice and potentially being at risk of paying that money back. So what we're gonna do is use the balance, we have about, after we pay the bills this month, because we have been paying for the architectural drawings for the municipal complex, we also paid for the rest of the, the PRP plan, we paid for all of that out of the ARP funds, which was a great, great use of the funds. So we'll end up with somewhere about, less than $200,000 left in the fund. We're gonna deposit that into the general fund and use it to pay regular expenses. And then at the end of the, that ARPA money will be gone. At the end of the year, the board can decide what to do with excess surplus funds.
And we're permitted to do that?
Yep. Yep. We, because we received less than $10 million, we were able to take just a regular general election to say that we were going to use the funds to basically pay for anything, so operating expenses, payroll, any regular bills. We chose internally to obligate, obligate the money towards specific capital projects. We're at the end of the year, and we've spent all of the money that we can on that. We may have some outstanding bills next month that we'll pay towards the, towards the renovation project, but the rest of the money we'll put towards regular, everyday expenses.
Is the PRP, is that done?
Yep.
Financially done?
I believe we paid all of the outstanding bills this month, but there might be a straggler or two that comes in next month.
Your company?
Yes. I mean, we had to go through a couple little bits, but yeah, there's just gonna be stragglers, like Lori said, in the PRP plan. I was gonna put this in the engineering report, but the official final report isn't due until September of next year for the next MS4 report. So although the work, design, installation had to be complete by December 31st of this year, as far as the DEP is concerned, they don't need to see the report until September 30th, 2025. So that would be the next go-around, but that's gonna be the typical MS4.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Y'all need a breather, so that's okay, that's okay.
So that's why, you'll see, the ARP fund is all zeros for 2025, and that's, that's why. So in the municipal complex fund, that is where I am intending then to pay for the land development plans for the municipal complex project, and the balance of the architectural services for the designs that we're doing for the municipal complex renovation. The number hasn't changed, well, I increased it slightly from last year, so in 2024, we budgeted 230, it's up to 250, and we had had, we haven't spent anywhere near that in 2024. We budgeted that much because we weren't sure at that point what the, we were just at feasibility study stage at that point, so we were budgeting conservative, conservatively to allow us for the flexibility to do the project. Yeah, so that's, we're around on that, and we are gonna see grant funding for that TNN, that's on the agenda tonight, actually. TNN's helping us apply for some grants towards the municipal complex renovation, so we'll work on that in 2025 as well. We're hopeful. We already got turned down once, but, you know, we're resilient here. So then the other major changes to discuss, as we discussed at the budget workshop, a major portion, a major factor for the change in the carryover this year versus last year is the request from the fire department for the, a capital deposit, a deposit into their capital fund, which the value, the, the fire department's capital fund is held by the township. So we deposit that money into a separate account, and we hold that in a separate fund. It doesn't, it's, we're not depositing that money into the fire department's bank account. That's more for the public's explanation. So that's the outstanding item that we have to discuss. I know the fire department is here, I'm hoping that they have insurance numbers for me, because that was the other item that we left unfinished last time.
Is that in the vote?
Nothing. Okay. Okay. All right. Well, then I would say, unless the board has any specific questions about any of the other, any of the other sections, there were minor changes made that were all the discussion, based on the discussions that we had at the workshop meeting. Otherwise, I would suggest we discuss the fire department capital. So the fire department requested $400,000, and if you guys want to come up, so you can have the microphone for the discussion, but the fire department, in their 2025 budget request, they asked for no, and I'm just gonna kind of summarize it, because we have some faces that weren't here for the workshop, but no increase in regular contributions for operating funds, with the exception of the insurance. So their workers' comp insurance, they're being forced to find a new carrier, they're having trouble getting quotes. The numbers are much higher than they have been in the past. That is through no fault of their own. Every fire department across Pennsylvania is having trouble getting workers' comp coverage.
It's not for lack of trying. There's multiple options.
So those numbers have increased, but they did not request an increase to their regular operating expenditure, so that number has stayed the same from 2024. They are asking for 400, well, they did ask for 400,000 into their capital fund to go towards new equipment. In order to get the carryover down to where it sits right now, I put $100,000 for a deposit into their capital fund for 2025 towards equipment, with the understanding that we will continue to work in our executive committee on a long-term capital funding plan, we can discuss grant opportunities, we can discuss, we have discussed already, you know, looking at how the low-interest loans for a portion of the equipment might work, and we can come up with a funding plan.
And again, that, that ask was, was only a conversation starter.
Yeah.
We're grateful for thought. 100 is awesome.
So feedback from the board on 100,000 and where that leaves our carryover.
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
And just, just so that, for anyone that's watching this or is here, we always have, have had a carryover, as long as I have been on the board, and except for one year, we've never spent that carryover. In fact, we've always had a surplus at the end of the year.
Yes.
I just wanna make that very clear, that yes, having a carryover is a concern, but in reality, it's not.
Done with us.
All right.
CPA, did you want to discuss?
Yeah. So I, I want to second what Martha said, and we, we recognize that we get great, we get great value from the fire department, and, and you've heard from us in the past that our only concern is, we can't just say we think, we feel like we're getting good value from it, we have to really, we have to make sure that we're paying, spending the public's money wisely, right? So that's why we are always so focused on the accounting and making sure that we can see the changes from year to year. With that in mind, I would propose, and I know that we, in past discussions with the fire department, we have come into an agreement where you have hired a CPA to assist with some of the bookkeeping because of the fact that you are a volunteer fire because of the fact that you are a volunteer fire department and don't have paid staff that helps with bookkeeping. I think that that arrangement has worked to a certain extent, but because it is the, the board's demand and the request of the board to make sure that the township residents' funding is being spent wisely for fire department services, I think the more appropriate relationship would be for us to be the clients of the CPA, rather than the fire department being the clients for the CPA. And so that is something that I would say as part of this budget discussion, we, we consider.
Two things to that point, if I can. I have to take that back to my board. And then separately, we are considering looking towards more of a bookkeeper to do more of the work and take less off of volunteer treasurer. So the money, take more off of our volunteer treasurer and more into the hands of a bookkeeper on a daily or weekly basis. So with those considerations, we can certainly get back to you on it, but I'm not authorized to, you know, to make that change without talking to my board.
So I think the thing on the table is basically a question of whether the board would like to condition that funding on that. I mean, regardless of, I mean, understanding that you'll go back to your board and whether that's authorized. I think the question is whether the board would like to move forward with, with the arrangement being that we're the client and conditioning our funding of the CPA on that for the purposes of budgeting. So I guess.
So just to be specific, you're asking to be the client for oversight of the money that you give us?
Correct.
All right, not of our overall budget or any of?
No, just the, just the CPA. Yeah, just. Yeah, no, just, just the CPA, because like you still, you get, you get your operational donation, that's the same, everything else. Workers' comp, you get your workers' comp.
And if you wanted to outsource to a bookkeeper on your own, I'm sorry.
What I'm hearing is outsourced, you're looking at outsourcing to a bookkeeper that, to work with that CPA.
Yeah.
That we'd have the CPA covered under our check and you guys would have a bookkeeper on your end.
Right.
Yeah, that way we have.
That might marry up well.
That way, yeah, that, that, the bookkeeper idea sounds fantastic. I think that's a good way to go with it, and that would definitely be a good complement to the CPA.
You know, we're in transition of going from one treasurer to another.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and all that understood, yeah, so.
Given that the budget has to, we have to authorize the, the publication of the budget, how procedurally would we be able to go back this? Because, I mean, either, I mean, if the decision is the capital funding is conditioned on this, I mean, that's kind of, it's either you get it or you don't.
Yeah, I would say, I think the best way to do it, I mean, a budget is a guide. Just because it's in there doesn't mean it has to be spent, but I would suggest putting it in. We work on this, we make this issue number one for our executive committee and come to the terms. But what you're describing sounds very similar to the situation that we operate internally here with, where we have, we have a bookkeeper and then a CPA to do oversight. And that would allow a CPA to give the board higher-level financial reports on.
And in regard to the capital money, we don't have any plans to withdraw any in '25 anyway.
That's correct, and I did, I failed to mention that, they did not ask to spend anything in, in 2025. So yeah, I think that that, so we leave the numbers as is, but the board has a close watch on it. You would have to approve that disbursement anyway, in that amount.
Right.
Do we know how we would write this motion?
We, we wouldn't need to include that piece, because we would just approve the budget and decide later whether to spend it based on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll, we'll talk about it in our steering committee.
We're 100 feet away from ordering.
Understood.
Right, and then as far as, there would be, there will have to be a separate action related to hiring the CPA, so we can have a more detailed discussion on that at that point, too, with, with the motion.
There should be time for you to go back to your board and chat about it and.
But we'll put this on the agenda for our executive committee.
I've had four conversations about pumper trucks since, I mean, I've never had so many conversations about pumper truck. No, with residents, you know, who live in the area that was hit by that, that fire.
Yes, yeah.
You know, it's, we, we see the value of it, so it's not that we don't. It's just we, we need to be able to answer the question of how the township's spending its money.
Police account, that's what?
Yep. Exactly. So are there any other points to discuss with our fire company here?
Thank you, thank you for existing and serving the township.
Yeah.
Very much appreciated.
All righty, seeing nothing else, I'll pass it back to Lori for where, where we're, we're done with the discussion, I suppose.
Yeah, well, that.
Do you have any other points from the budget you want to touch on?
Those were, those were the major, those were the major items and the changes from the last meeting. Unless, Valentina, am I missing anything? Those were the main outstanding, did it, do any board members have any remaining outstanding questions?
I have no questions. I just want to say, Lori, this is a great job and thank you. It's a big task. I've been there, I've been in your shoes, I know what it's like, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I will stop my lobbying for a larger perks budget, so I will. I'll be back next.
I would love one.
I know.
If I could find the.
I know.
The time would help.
Yeah. Okay, well.
All right, great, thank you for that discussion. We'll move right on to the next one. We'll come back to that later for a vote, I think.
Yeah, it's under new business.
Yes, it's under new business, great, thank you.
I know.
Yeah, it's, everything gets a little disjointed. So we'll move on to the motion. I'll make a motion to appoint Brian McCarthy to the rank of lieutenant effective November 13th, 2024.
A second.
Thank you. Discussion from Lori. And Chief.
So I, I will start, but I'll invite Chief up to participate in this discussion, too. We have discussed it briefly before. This is part of the chief's proposed backfilling plan. Obviously, we all, with the passing of Chief Frye in the beginning of the year, Fitzsimmons has taken over that role, and he is, can't do the job all by himself, you know, surprisingly. He can't be everywhere at once, so promoting Brian McCarthy will help to lessen some of the administrative load on, on the chief. And it will allow us to make two other promotions that you'll see, the next two items on the agenda. But Chief can come up and give you more detail.
Specifically just for this or the, or the following?
Specifically for this.
Okay. I seriously don't think you could find a more qualified candidate for this position. He's grown up in this police department, he knows it from top to bottom. He lives in a community, he knows the people, and he's responsive to anybody that asks him for anything. On top of that, he is one tech guru, which I am not. So we complement each other in that way. I really appreciate the board considering this. It's 100% necessary, it's not fluff, it's not a luxury. It, it's what we need to keep things moving forward, so that's what I have.
All right, thank you.
Did everyone, anyone see the, the wonderful articles on Sergeant McCarthy's family?
Yes, I was actually.
In the Stroll magazine?
I was just thinking that.
Wonderful.
We just saw it before we came in here tonight.
It was, it was lovely. I, I was thinking to myself, oh, he has a, a media campaign behind. No, it was, it was really, it was really wonderful.
Well, that magazine only goes to certain neighborhoods.
We don't get it in our neighborhood.
Yeah, we don't have a subscription. I guess I'll have to.
Just get it in the mail.
Yeah, it just shows up.
Yeah.
Just to your neighborhood.
Sorry, Martha. I didn't mean to open up magazine gate here. It was a really nice article.
I think, I think we had that discussion maybe three years ago or something, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, thank you very much. It's, we, we see the, the value we get out of the, the police department, and it's, it's great to see that Brian's, Brian's in a position for, for appointment to lieutenant. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion from the board, public, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, I'll make a motion, we approve the memorandum of understanding terms of employment for Lieutenant Brian McCarthy effective November 13th, 2024. Do I have a second?
A second.
Oh, subject to final approval by Labor Council.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have discussion on that?
I will just say that that subject to final approval by Labor Council is just a technicality, because he didn't get to read the final version yet. So before anybody signs it, it will get final sign off.
Yep. All right, any questions from the board, public, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, make a motion to approve police department promotion of Officer James Deoria to sergeant effective November 13th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, yeah.
I'll just point out that that should say corporal. Yeah, I'm just, every time we do this, I catch a typo.
I'll, yeah, I'll amend that.
Lives.
Pretend I, pretend, pretend I said corporal, yeah.
He's currently, he's currently the corporal.
Yes, officer.
Yes.
Oh, I'll pretend, yeah, pretend I said corporal.
No matter how many times.
Deoria, yeah.
Again, Jim Deoria is a longtime member of this community, this police department. He single-handedly started the PAL program in Phoenixville and has run that for many, many years. When he got promoted to corporal, it was new experience for him, and he has more than grown into that position. He has exceeded my expectations in every way. I see no reason that he won't continue to do that job and then some as a sergeant. Can't say enough good things about him, just a solid, solid person and a solid police officer.
All right, thank you. So motions been made, second, any discussion from the board? And always, as always, thanks to, to Jimmy there for his service to the community. It's, it's good to see him out there. Thank you. Any public comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion, we approve police department promotion of Officer Charles Heller to full-time officer effective November 13th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, discussion. Bat right back up, a little Jack in the Box here.
Getting your steps.
Officer Heller is currently a part-time officer. He's kind of a non-traditional candidate, came to this a little bit late, but he is well-grounded, very, very good rapport with people in the communities. Also, he lives in the borough, but he's close by here, he's a Phoenixville person. Just has done everything we've asked of him, he's filled holes in the schedule. He's done everything I've asked of him to do. I can't find anything negative or any reason why we wouldn't promote him to full-time. Just a, just a good person, thank you.
And I, I know, we all know that Skookel Township does a fantastic job of training our part-time police officers, and they get snapped up like, like that. So it is a pleasure that we can have this motion on the agenda. So we don't, so no, we don't lose another part-time officer to the, to someone else. So any further discussion from the board? Public, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And I will just add there that obviously none of these officers are here tonight. So we will, we'll discuss and, and we'll schedule a special swearing-in ceremony to do all of these, all of these things. And we also have some, and Chief will, we'll touch on it later, I'm sure, but we have some other recognitions that we want to do. So what the plan is to pick a date and handle that all at once, that we can effectively recognize them for their promotions.
Thank you. We will move to new business. I'll make a motion to advertise the 2025 Skookel Township proposed budget for adoption on December 11th, 2024. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? I think we exhausted it. Any discussion from the public, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Make a motion to advertise intent to appoint a CPA for the Skookel Township 2024 audit. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I will just add, this is a standard administrative item that we do every year. We're required to advertise our intent to appoint a CPA. It has to happen at a certain period of time, which is now, so we'll advertise that. We use Barbicane as our, as our certified public accountant, and they do our annual audit every year.
All right. Any questions from the board, comments, public? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we authorize our township manager to obtain appraisal for parcel P.
I'll second.
Thank you. Yeah, open space, open space purchases, basically. So we have, it's currently. Yeah, but I, I don't have any comment. Do we have any further comments from the board? Are there any questions from the public, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to authorize Lori Gutz to attend the PA Municipal League Annual Training Conference at the Hershey Lodge, February 26th, 28th, 2025, with overnight accommodations.
I'll second.
Thank you. Lori?
So this is, this is an annual conference that, that I attend. It's a professional managers' conference. It focuses on municipal labor relations. It's a really great training opportunity that I'm fortunate enough to go to every year. It's usually in state college, this year it's moving to Hershey, so it's even easier to get to. But, so that's, that's that.
Any questions from the board? Public, anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry, we're, we're double-checking it, Bill.
Okay. All right, we're making a motion here, I'll make a motion here to authorize Valentina Mitterer to attend the PA Municipal League Annual Training Conference at Hershey Lodge, February 26th, 28th, 2025, with overnight accommodations. So I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Same deal.
Same deal, but Valentina's first time.
Congratulations.
Very excited.
I presume. Any questions from the board, comments, concerns, anything from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to authorize the township manager to transfer a balance of ARPA funds into the general fund to be used for regular operating expenditures. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So this is what I explained earlier. Instead of writing a check, because I don't know the final amount yet, I'll be able to do an electronic transfer of the balance of the account out of the ARP fund and into the general fund once we pay the bills this month.
All right.
Should we wait for Valentina so she can take the minutes?
Yeah, sorry, we just.
I have it, I have the motion captured.
Okay, well, motion's on the table to transfer our ARPA funds. Seconds been made, any discussion from the board?
We already have it.
Yeah, we did. Public, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, we're on to resolutions and ordinances. I will make a motion that we pass ordinance number 2024-04, amending chapter 370 zoning titled Convenience Store With Gas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We discussed this earlier, are there any, is there any further discussion from the board? Nope, anything from the public? Seeing nothing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 2024-21 to approve an application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for statewide local share assessment grant for the sidewalk project. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Want to touch on that, thanks?
Yes, we are taking a stab at getting some additional money to help offset the costs of the sidewalk project. It has.
On Route 23.
What's that?
On Route 23.
On Route 23, yes. We got a grant for this, for this project pre-COVID, which delayed the, and then obviously COVID delayed the process. So as does everything else, but costs have increased every year on this. So we are in a position where while we have a million-dollar grant, which is fabulous, the costs of this project have just continued to escalate. And while we're working on it to try to get it done as quickly as possible, we are needing to seek some additional funding to help offset and defray some of the increased costs.
I just skimmed through this, I didn't really read it. When will we know that we've got it?
We don't.
It's gonna be, I think that.
It's gonna be, I think that. Yeah, it's gonna, probably not until this time next year.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't mean we're not going to do any work on the.
No.
Project.
No, we're continuing to work and we have budgeted amounts. This is just to help in addition to, this came up, so we want to take a stab at it and apply.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not going to postpone the project, because the costs are going to continue to increase.
They're going to continue to increase, so we are going to continue to apply and continue to plug along and hope that we get some funding to help us. But yes, we are, we are continuing to work on the project.
How much funding are we looking at for these grants? Like ballpark?
I think we were putting in for, do you?
For, for the sidewalk, we're putting in for a million. The max.
Okay, motion's been made, second's been made. Any further discussion for you guys? From the public, anything? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty-two to approve an application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for statewide local share assessment grant for the municipal complex renovation. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Same deal, we are just trying to get money wherever we can for all of our projects. You just heard me explain, our ARPA funds are exhausted. So while we were fortunate to be able to use that money for the bulk of our architectural, we, we now need to start seeking money for the next phase, which will be construction. So, that's what we're doing.
Sounds great, thank you. Anything from you guys?
This really has nothing to do with this particular motion, but are you having conversations with our state rep about other funding options?
The RACB funding?
Yes.
Yes, we knocked down their door probably every, very, very frequently, yes. That hasn't opened yet, so.
Okay.
We're, but this actually will help us, we'll already have kind of an application ready to go that as soon as that, deal with RACB is you never know when it's gonna open. So we need to be prepared. If they open the grant, the funding round and say, oh, RACB, we have to be ready to put in an application right away, so this will help us to do that. But yes, we will be working with them and they have to give us letters of recommendation.
Okay, cool.
For these things, so.
Perfect.
They're aware that we're looking for money.
All right, any further discussion? Public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two-minute reports. Start with John.
Yes.
Yay. So, nothing much to report on really either one. So EAC, I guess the, the biggest thing is that Michelle, the chair, is currently looking to step down and nominate someone else to be in the chair position. It's still open discussion as to who's going to take that. That's kind of the big item over there. As far as PRPC, nothing, nothing really notable. Talked a little bit about trails and then just general, general updates, but nothing really notable to report on.
Didn't they do a letter of support for the?
The Skookel Rail Authority? Yeah, they did. I didn't read the letter myself, though, so I don't know what that entailed. It wasn't available to me at the time.
Yeah. So I remember a couple meetings ago, I reported that we had a presentation by, I don't know if his role is director, but he's leading the Skookel Rail effort to room, regional rail to Redding, back to Redding, through a model very similar to what they do for the Keystone Line, that would be run by Amtrak. And there was questions from the participating municipalities, is what, what could we do to support that? And so Ed Thierkoff took the initiative directed by the, by the municipalities to draft letters of support. So that's what that is.
All right. Anything else from you? All right, Danielle, if you've got anything else?
And John attended my committee.
Great. Martha?
The school district came before the historical commission regarding the demolition of one of the buildings at the University of Valley Forge property. They approved it. They also said that it went before the planning commission. I'll, I'm, I'm not going to steal your thunder. They did reluctantly approve that demolition, so eventually that will come before us, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yes, but we, it will eventually come before you.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just saying that, that the historical commission at their meeting.
Yes.
Approved the, they're okay with the demolition of it, so it eventually will come. Yes.
They came before the planning commission with plans for making it a more useful space for mechanic work and things like that at the bus depot.
Yes.
That's.
Our mechanic is, doesn't like working outside in the cold.
Right, enclosing that, enclosing the structure, getting it, yeah, so, yeah.
And it's hard to find employees, mechanics who want to work outside, so. That's really the only thing that's happened with the historical commission. They are still talking about the America two fifty, but no concrete plans with that at this point. This Saturday, we are holding a textile recycling event at Manavon Elementary from eight AM to one PM. So, clean out your closets and I will be there, so come and wave to me. And that's pretty much all I have. Can't think of anything else.
Is that Manavon?
Yep.
Lots of activity. Lots of activity recently on the open space front. The outreach crew is doing a great job and hoping to see some more things unfolding next year with that. Other than that, everything's good.
Cool, thank you. I attended Planning Commission, we've already touched on all those items in subdivision and land development. There was the variance in the waivers from stormwater management, so I don't think we need to go back over them. And the bus depot. We've already touched on that too. Great. Lori?
Sorry, I stole your thunder.
It's fine, I don't care.
So just a brief update on where we are at with our open space acquisition. We are on target to complete this transaction by the end of the year. We've almost a hundred percent completed our, our bond issuance process. In fact, that should be wrapped up by the end of this week. We went through the rating process and the township got a double-A plus rating, which is extremely impressive for a municipality of, of our size. So it's almost as high as you can get for those who don't know, but, and I think we have a, you know, what we'll be working on is to make some, make some changes and some improvements and put some new policies in place and do our audits a little bit differently in hopes of getting upgraded to triple-A. So that's something that we'll, we'll be working on. But as we discussed with the budget tonight, I mean, I think the, the rating is a reflection of the conservative way that the board has budgeted here over the, the many years here. We didn't have any debt up until this point. And a double-A plus rating for a municipality like us, I think is, I mean, it's a huge testament to the way that the finances have been managed here. So, moving along. So we'll be done, done with that shortly.
Great, thank you. Go to Chief of Police.
Right.
I'll start off with the, the monthly activity report. I believe everyone's got a copy. If there's any questions about that, I'll field them at this time. I'll move on then. Might as well address the elephant in the room with the recent homicide that we had last week. I want to commend the two initial officers that responded to a unknown situation. We had some brief, the call actually went to Montgomery County Dispatch rather than Chester County Dispatch and that was transferred. The officers, it was confusing and kind of tumultuous scene. They took control, they handled it, they administered first aid, they worked with the EMS people. There wasn't really anything anybody could do, but they did everything they were trained to do. Subsequent to that, I got a phone call at three-thirty in the morning and responded along with Sergeant McCarthy. And we assisted them, moved, stepped back one thing. Phoenixville Borough dispatched three officers to back up our two officers on that scene. I can't say enough about the cooperation that Phoenixville has extended us and we've extended to them. It's a very close relationship and we're all the better for it. Situations like this don't happen all the time, but when they do, you need a lot of people and you need them fast. Once the scene was stabilized, called the county detectives, district attorney actually came out, not the Chris, the head DA came out, but one of the assistant DEAs came out and worked with us hand in hand, along with six to seven detectives from the, Chester County detectives. We could not have done it without them. I kind of pride myself in the department on the cooperation. There's no egos involved in this situation. We just need to get the job done and get it done right. And I, in this case, I believe we did that. It's a tragic situation. I wish I could say there's something proactively that we could do to prevent these kind of situations, but we can't be everywhere and we didn't know what was going on was going on. So we, the measure, I think, of the police department is how they responded to a horrific circumstance. Moving on from that situation, a little bit brighter news. I believe all of you received a copy of some actions that Officer Shallas took on his way to work. Again, this is an officer who participates in the regional SWAT team. He happened to be dropping off some equipment to one of the other officers over in Trudifern, so he took a different route to work than he would normally take and came across an off-the-road accident, which resulted in a fire to the vehicle. And his actions were instrumental in saving the person that was involved in the accident. When he got there, there was another person standing alongside the road, said he thought there was somebody in the car or around the car, but didn't go off the road. Eric, off-duty, did what he had to do, drugged the person out and got them treatment. As far as I know, they're expected to survive. There were some pretty severe burns involved. But again, I'm blessed to have people like that work for us. That's all I have, unless you have any questions. I can't really get into the details of the homicide, but I can only tell you that it was handled professionally.
And we, we appreciate the response from the police department. We know we, we can trust you guys to handle these situations, even when they go south like this. So, we do appreciate the service you guys provide here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
To lighten the mood a little bit, I do happen to have a video of Officer Shallas going down the slide of our ghoul bus and, at, at our movie night. And not only is he a good police officer, but he's a lot of fun too.
Well, we'll leave all of, all of that out.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
This is why, this is why we put you last.
Yeah, yeah. Well, everyone stole my thunder, so we talked about the PRP plan and how that's in September, so I wanted to give the board an update on that. Also, I was talking with Lori about a week ago and we're going to work towards getting a, another submission into PennDOT for the sidewalk plan on Route twenty-three. If you recall, the initial submission was kind of cleaning up the original Gilmore plans, getting it in there to get a flush for some comments. We got some several comments and now we're going through and we're trying to put more design into it and, and try to clear out additional comments along the way. Additionally, I had a meeting with Lori as well and we're, are going to actively be working on grants for the townships. We're going to be looking through them, soliciting them and then running them past Lori and Valentina to see if that's something that the township would want. We've been very successful with some of our other townships, just, you know, we've got Monica, who has done some projects with the township here. She's gotten over four million dollars for police departments, fire apparatus and things like that for, for some of the counties that she represents up in Lehigh County. So we'll start to really look and try to, try to pull that together. And I did get an email about the updates today. Monica and Gina did a scrub down of the ones that were just released that our company does. There was nothing that would have been applicable to Skookel, but I will be able to give updates on that as we go.
So, we'll, we had talked about having a workshop meeting dedicated to just the sidewalk project, probably in February. Is that still doable or?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we said first, sometime in the first quarter, so I think that's, I think, why don't we see where we're at with the resubmission and then plot out what would be a good, a good timeframe for that. But yeah, sooner rather than later, we do get questions from the residents wanting to know what the status of the project is.
Exactly.
And, you know, I know, we are working on it.
Yes.
Internally diligently, but I understand it does, until you see shovels in the ground, but these things take, I mean, just going back and forth with PennDOT on plans that are from the process of getting them updated from how old the, old they were. I mean, some, some regulations changed that required revisions to the plans that wouldn't have.
Yeah, I just think it would be nice sooner rather than later to have, you know, a public meeting, obviously for the public and everyone that's interested in the project.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Cool.
Okay, I think we are through our two-minute reports. We have a discussion on agenda items for the upcoming workshop meetings. Thank you for touching on that before we got to it.
Sign one, we'll be one of those, yes. We don't, we don't have any more workshops before the rest of the year.
Yeah.
So we will, yeah, we'll start plotting out what we're, what we want to focus on in January.
Great. No further discussion on that one, I assume? Great. And then.
Do we have a workshop meeting this month? This month?
Not, not until the, New Year.
Not until January. Yeah, we don't do workshops in November, December because of the holidays.
We'll talk about it with, we'll talk about it with Lori. Anything from the fire department? If you've got any updates or anything you want to share or events coming up?
Actually, you came out to the breakfast the other week. Did I see you? You showed up late, you missed all the fun. What was left for you? Because you slept in.
I just came to say hello.
I, I didn't see you. I didn't see you, but we had a whole, we had a whole table of bus girls.
Well, I came, I came from the chicken way.
Soup sales this weekend, if you haven't ordered.
Yes, I have.
All right.
If you haven't ordered, it's too late.
Correct.
I, I will make it eventually, I've only lived in the township for like. It's a decade.
Discounted, late order, there you go, yeah.
I'll pay full price.
It's been a busy couple weeks, I want to remind everybody that we're still in a burn band that will likely be extended, given the current environmental conditions. Go ahead.
Just on that note, if I happen to be stupid enough to put a fire pit out in my backyard and it spreads, is there a fine?
You are subject to a one-hundred-dollar first-time offense, fine. But the damage occurred is likely in excess of that hundred dollars. But it would be, it would be a foolish decision for you to do such a thing during this current burn.
So I wouldn't be subject to paying you guys? Oh, I'm not talking about me, I'm not stupid, but there are other people that might be.
I'm not certain where. I'm not certain where that money ends up going, because it's a county-wide burn. It could go to DCNR, it could go, I, I'm not certain. But the, the maximum penalty is three hundred dollars for your third offense.
Per instance?
Per instance, yeah.
Three hundred, three hundred, you said?
One hundred, two hundred, then three hundred and then three hundred for each.
So who, who, who issues those?
We would, it's a great question. Technically, we should, or, or the police department, that's something we can decide. Typically with the other enforcement things, they go through Kim. She sends letters for.
So it's, it's through the township, not you guys? Okay? Look, I, I am not stupid, I have not done anything like that, but there are some people in my neighborhood.
Mistakes are made from time to time. Yeah, I, I would encourage you, if you do see people doing something like that, have that neighborly. Yeah, I, I would encourage you, if you do see people doing something like that, have that neighborly conversation first. And if you need to escalate it, go right ahead, but sometimes you catch more bees with honey than you do just calling out the dogs first time out, you know?
To reiterate, that includes recreational fires and a fire pit.
If you are burning natural materials, wood, leaves, sticks,
natural materials.
T-shirts, whatever it is.
But smoking my chicken in my smoker is okay?
It's absolutely okay.
Okay.
Smoking your chicken, that's okay?
Smoking a chicken in my smoker.
If you are cooking.
If you're cooking.
You're cooking those.
If you're cooking it outside?
It is excluded. That is a function of living.
What if you're cooking a marshmallow on a fire? That would be an open, yeah, that's an open flame. What if you're burning Cowboys Rally towels that you brought back from Texas?
You'll get a pat on the back, but you're gonna find- So the semi-enclosed, I forget what they call them now, where it has a chimney built in.
Any, any open flame of natural fire.
As long as the flames open to air.
It doesn't cover propane. We actually have a nice Q and A on our Facebook page.
There we go.
That is propane appliances, so you drag out the fire pit that you have and plug in the propane bottle. They're still legal. We're concerned about anything leaving that fire pit that ultimately will travel someplace else somewhere.
So I think we have comprehensively covered that issue for now. If you need more information, please go to the Fire Department's Facebook page.
Because I didn't know.
Yeah, please, please use the Fire Department's Facebook page for their Q and A.
There we go.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the feedback. If you don't mind forwarding me or Lori, whatever grant information you have there. I, I don't think there's anything out there that we don't really know about or go for, but I'd like to take a look.
Yeah.
And other than that, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, public comment. I see none. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.